He's the joey on tonight.
All right.
Lucky him.
I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for February 2020. I'd like you to rise and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I agree with the rule.
Yes. Belzak?
Here.
Clistak?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Since the President, one absence, we have a quorum. Takes us to number five on our agenda. Questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to address the city council on any item. Doesn't necessarily be on tonight's agenda. We put this in our, on our agenda several years ago, so residents stand, they have to wait till the end of the meeting to make a comment. So does anyone in the audience, would anybody in the audience like to address the city council tonight on any item, either on the agenda or not on the agenda? State your name.
My name's Dr. Kelly Glisten. I'd been hopeful Alderman Vaughn would be here. I know he wasn't here the last time I spoke either. I don't see him outside. All right. So last time I spoke about my children, and my daughter would have loved to have been here today, but she wanted me to convey a message to this body, and that's simply that a pot shop in Darien's a bad idea. And as a recent graduate of Hensdale South, of course, she's been active in peer leadership, the DARE program, a lot of these activities that these high school students get involved in to actually fight drug use as opposed to promote the use of it. Now, I realize we're in the, probably the second inning of a nine inning game on this pot shop coming into our community, but just a few things, you know, what does our community really want? Now, survey of 500 people out of 22,000, you know, at best, that's directional. I did some research today, and you may be surprised to know, in California, probably the most liberal state in the Union, 300 cities out of 482 ban cannabis, you know, marijuana sales are illegal in those communities. They had a choice, they said no. So basically, 62% of the communities and the municipalities in California said no. Now, what do they know that we don't, albeit in the largest marijuana industry in the nation? We'll continue to ask those questions. Last time I spoke, I spoke from, you know, medical perspective, as a doctor of healthcare administration, and Professor Legansky also spoke about the ill effects. It's interesting, the day after marijuana was legalized in Chicago, you know, respiratory failure, and having read the article, and there was a lot to it, but the gist of it was, these products of the 70s, you know, hey, you know, I haven't torched up, you know, in 35 years, whatever, let's see what it's about. Many of those, if they were at Woodstock, they wouldn't remember it, but that was the gist of it. Given the easy access, people that would not have ever torched up did so, and the adverse effects were realized in the emergency room. Couple of questions I would have asked on the survey, and I did spend a couple hours going through the board packet, I would have probably, first question I would have asked is, are you over 21 years of age? Are you a resident of Darien? I tried to go through the IPs, figure out which were spoofed, which were ghosted, which were real, et cetera, but I would have asked, are you a resident? Do you have an arrest record? And I know, or Mayor Marchase got the letter from the third grader. I would suspect she's on Darien connect, she took the time to write, you know, a letter about marijuana use, and she probably answered the survey. I want to wrap things up by addressing, you know, conflict of interest. There was a September 16th meeting where this body voted whether or not to allow a pot shop in Darien. If a member of this body had a personal interest in investments in the marijuana industry, or if they had actively promoted an investment in the marijuana industry, I believe that it would have been appropriate for them to recuse themselves, or abstain, or whatever the term is, have not voted. And if, that may be the case, or may not be the case, but if that is the case, I would encourage them to approach Mayor Marchase, express, you know, perhaps an oversight, and request another vote on the issue as appropriate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. First of all, I need to correct one thing, though, Kelly, and that is that September 16th was not a vote on whether or not we were going to allow a pot shop in Darien. It was an opt-out ordinance, and the opt-out ordinance was placed there, Mr. Vanna and I put that on there for the council to make a decision. And that opt-out ordinance failed, and in effect, by failing, that's what basically said, the council was saying, we're going to allow this to happen in Darien.
I understand, you know, legalese and the implications of that. I was just trying to oversimplify the result, but thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
I guess I have a question, Joe, though, too. He's implying that someone has a conflict of interest. I mean, has that been proven to be true? I mean, I don't know anything of that.
I'm not implying anything. I use the term "may," and I use the term "if." You know, I was very careful in my speech in those two words, but I appreciate that CFO corn, or I'm sorry, treasurer corn, I appreciate that. I just want to make that distinction. Everybody needs to think within themselves if that "may," or if that "if" applies to them.
That's a good point. I just wanted to make sure. If you did know something about that, I'd be very interested in knowing that it was a fact, but, okay.
You know, at this time, it would be a private matter. I mean, an "if" or "may," again, I was very disciplined in using those two terms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have anything they'd like to bring forward? Please step forward, sir, just state your name.
Anthony Ramos.
Will you come to the microphone, Anthony?
Okay. Anthony Ramos.
Thank you.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. As I mentioned, my name is Anthony Ramos, and I come before you to discuss the proposal for the Darien downtown development exploration for 75th and Cass. As a brief background, I grew up in the Darien Downers Grove Woodridge area for most of my youth, and positive experiences and memories of the area have brought me back here to raise my family. I moved back in the area in 2014, and it's, it's part of why I'm coming back, is because of the experiences I've had around here. This has been reinforced in terms of the choice to move back here and raise the family, reinforced by the good work that the folks over at District 61 have done. My eldest is in first grade, and my youngest will attend Mark Delay next year. And I've been to the school twice, served as a watchdog, daddies of great students, and had an opportunity to see the impact on my kids and their love of learning from the work being done there in the district. In regards to the proposed downtown area in the northwest corner of 75th and Cass, I understand that initial conversations, at least what I've been able to gather from the patch articles, have begun with the school board, and they have requested perhaps additional information. And based on that, I haven't seen anything about alternatives to LACE as a school, like what will happen to those students and the families that have students that either attend LACE currently or will in the future. And so as a result, what I'm asking is that, if there's additional information that's going to be shared with the D61 school board, if that could be made public to the PTA, all the parents at the D61 institutions, and the city as a whole. The article states that declining enrollment is an issue, and yes, that has been a trend, particularly since the 2008 recession, when families started having less children due to less means, and we understand that that impacts enrollment and population. But as we know with recessions, the economy will bounce back, and so making decisions based on current enrollment patterns deflects potentially some responsibility for the future. Also, the classes that I've seen at Delay are well populated. My first grader is in a class of 24 to 1 in terms of teacher to student ratio. And so, students can't be crammed into the existing spaces if LACE were to be closed, and if we want to maintain and build on the quality of learning, no closures of schools and increases in class sizes results in increases of student success. If the qualities in schools drop due to cramped classes and less physical resources, then the tagline of Darien being a nice place to live won't be the perspective of new residents and potential home buyers. No new families will want to relocate here if we negatively impact the potential of learning, if those institutions, if the institution is closed and no additional plans are made for classroom space. And so, and I think the other piece, too, to think about is that, you know, with this downtown area, there's an interest in economic development, and I can completely respect that. I also don't want to think about in terms of retail, and how retail has been declining. We see downtowns across the country closing because a lot of sales are happening online now. And so, in a retail environment, is that really kind of the next step for the city in terms of, what's the potential there? We need to do research, and a lot of research has been done on the Z generation. So, folks born between 1995 and 2010 are making a lot of economic decisions based on things that they've seen happen to their families through the 2008 recession. There's a lot of research that has been done on this, and so some things to think about is, this is the generation that will be making decisions around home buying, around education for their families over the next 30 to 50 years. And so thinking about our commitments to a downtown, will that or will not serve the city well? I can't answer that for you, but I feel like that's a conversation that we can engage in and look at the research, look at the people who are doing research on the generations to follow us, because the decisions we make will follow and impact their lives. And so, you know, and I think, too, about my time and how much I loved going to 75th and Lamont and other areas within, you know, if we think of the northwest corner of 75th and Lamont, there's a lot of vacant retail there, like what's happening to those spaces? And is the downtown redevelopment at 75th and Cass, does that, what's the risk there, particularly as there's no train line, there's no adjacent highway? So just, thanks for us to you on, and all I ask is you consider, as you consider this plan as a board, or as a council, to engage, as you engage with the leadership at D61. My request, this is just simply to engage us, the parents of children who will be impacted, engage, make public the information in the interest of transparency and broad engagement with the PTA, with the families, and with the city as a whole, as we engage in this kind of learning of the opportunities that are being proposed for the future of the city.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
If I, if I could just respond to you briefly.
Sure.
One of the things we mentioned to the school district last week when we met, was that we want to see this as a win-win for the school district, as well as the residents of the city of Darien.
Fantastic.
And that we know that there are significant questions that they have. We told them, this is not a decision that is made without any input. One of the things that we emphasize now, especially now that we have a new communications plan, is not only engagement, but it's actually listening to what residents have to say back to us before we make decisions. So that would be something that would be critical in terms of this decision. What you should know is that in any of the discussions we've had, we've talked about what we would do with the 400 students that actually go to LACE school, the third, fourth, and fifth graders. It would require the addition of probably 15 to 16 classrooms onto Mark Delay School. So we're not looking to, we're not looking to take 400 children and jam them into Eisenhower or, or the current Mark Delay, because the current Mark Delay does not have the capacity for that.
Correct.
So we, and the school district knows that. The current superintendent is very, very aware of that. And so it would require their, them to do, actually a needs analysis to determine how many classrooms they need and what kind of facility they would need to add on. Their concern right now is, whatever a developer would pay for the property, is that going to cover the cost of an addition onto Mark Delay, onto that building? Those are the factors that they have to look at. And of course, we would have to know how much that property's worth, and we would also want to know in terms of what a needs, the needs assessment is for them as well. With regard to the Chestnut Court, you bring up a good point, there are vacancies there. That's why we have an Economic Development Committee that is currently working to bring businesses into the city of Darien and to maintain businesses in the city. So we're looking to fill those in.
Okay.
So hopefully you won't see those vacancies over there.
Hopefully not.
The other thing is, I'm not a, I'm not a developer, nor is Mr. Vanna or anybody on this council. So we would depend on developers who actually build centers to determine whether or not we have a significant amount of retail. And I read all those articles as well. There was just an article in the Tribune in the business section this weekend about all the online shopping that took place this last holiday season versus the amount of actual retail.
Mm-hmm.
And there is retail that is doing well because it's adjusted to, you know, internet purchasing, and there's also retail that is not adjusted. So we would be dependent on a developer. We'd also want to know from a developer what they would put there. We're not going, we wouldn't call it a downtown, it is the geographic center. We would look at it as a, as an area that can be developed for housing, condominiums, parking, as well as a mall area and a gathering area for the residents. Anything we do, Anthony, would be done with input from the public, and I really need to caution everybody, this is extremely preliminary right now. This, this may not happen.
Sure.
The school district may, even after all the day, the school district may say, this is not a direction they want to go in, and that's fine. But it's part of a comprehensive plan, and as a mayor, I have a responsibility for the city to be able to provide services for you as residents that you come to expect. And in order to do that, we need to build our sales tax base, because we don't want to raise our property taxes, so we want to grow the sales tax revenue in the city, and one of the ways of doing that would be to have a center like that in Darien. If it doesn't happen, I would accept that, but it's, it's something that's been there since 2006, we're rethinking it, and we'll see what direction it goes in, but we'll also ask for a lot of input from residents.
Fantastic. I appreciate that. And I think what you shared earlier about adding on to Delay and thinking about the number of classrooms, and so I think that part of the challenge is, the only communication out there is what's been put into the patch articles that speak nothing to additional resources or making up for that classroom space. And so, in terms of communication and controlling, or contributing to the lack of information out there, what are ways that that could be communicated out so folks can start engaging in conversations and learning more about that the proposal includes the, not just closing classrooms, but adding classroom space to the existing institution? I think that would probably put a lot of parents at ease, per se, so.
Well, just, Anthony, your questions and your, your comments are right on point, and a lot of those same things, as the mayor mentioned, were, were done in preliminary discussions. Again, this came really just as a concept and, and a quick meeting with, with the school superintendent and business manager, once, one meeting at the school board, but going forward, nothing formal will happen until it, the issue comes back to the city council at a public meeting, because we had, we're talking here about getting maybe a memorandum of understanding between us and the school district, so any parameters are very clear to both entities. Because again, when we went to the school district, there was a lot of questions, and those questions need to be answered, and rightfully so, the school board was not interested in investing a lot of money in the research, because developments, things like this takes, takes research, it takes analysis on space and those things. So, we'll communicate as soon as we have something, but at this point, there's not another step. You know, I might talk to the superintendent about certain things, maybe about a memorandum, but anything like that will come back to this city council and would come back to the school board. So, anything that's happening, you'll be aware of, or the public, and we'll make sure we put it out in direct connect, which I'm hoping, I'm hoping you get now.
Absolutely.
And we would make that available, but at this point, even like a needs, a needs assessment, that would cost money that we have not been approved to spend, the school board hasn't. So those steps are coming, and this is the challenge we face in a lot of issues, when we want to take one baby step on an issue, but yet there are others that report that and do get a little bit ahead of us, but we'll, we'll be giving out information. I would say over the next month, I'll try to get something back to the city council and the school district, so we can at least have an understanding on terms, because again, I didn't want to recommend to the city that any analysis be done unless the school board gave an approval of the concept. So, you'll get more information out, probably within the next 30 days.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi. My name's Christina Holsman. I'm actually just wanting to build on Mr. Ramos, and I thank you so much for acknowledging many of the concerns that I came with. I, again, I just wanted to build on it a bit, especially as a, as a mother who's very involved in the schools, and who has moved around a lot. We lived for a while in Brookfield, and I'm skipping around a bit. So, I'm concerned that a lot of the plan right now from the school board or from you find people, might be based on current enrollment, and I understand that there's concern that, that numbers are still going down. But I just bought my house, not that long ago, and I will tell you that I looked at well over 20 houses, all within Darien, and almost all of them were being sold by either somebody moving to a smaller place because they were near retirement age, or because unfortunately someone had died from the older generation, and just on my block alone. I know there, there are still currently six or seven houses that are still, people who've lived there, that are in their 60s, 70s, 80s. So I feel like the turnaround is going to be possibly bigger than can be anticipated, and I, and that is living proof in Brookfield, where I came from. They had a huge drop in enrollment, because there is a Sears catalog neighborhood, right? A lot of the original owners were still living there up until not that long ago. And they had a huge drop in numbers, so they actually closed one of their schools and sold it off, and then just started using their classrooms for other things a long time ago. Now, they're running into huge problems, because what I'm saying is going to happen over the next few, you know, 10 or 20 years here, has happened to them earlier. And so now, they, all of their, a lot of their schools are impacted, they've had to put on additions to two of their buildings already, with the plan of building another one. And this is all money that's costing the school district, and they had to pass a referendum that took them three attempts to pass. So, it's one of those, I, I wanted to just, again, echo Mr. Ramos's thought of, that the recession happened, a lot of things, people didn't move who might have moved originally, people were stuck in their homes. I think that trend is going to change. Whether or not we come back in prices, I think the young families really are moving here, and I'm speaking as one that just did it. A lot of my friends, and a lot of the people I know, are starting to consider Darien much more seriously than they did before for, for moving, because we know the schools are good, and we know the schools are small, and that's a huge benefit. I'm also coming at this from two other perspectives. I have three children who have IEPs, who have some form of special need, and whenever school classrooms get cut, or that kind of thing, you don't lose, people always talk about classroom enrollment, the numbers in a specific classroom, but when you lose the extra space that a school might have, the first people to lose that are the people who really, really need it. It's the kids, they run out of that space for pullout, they run out of that space for children to have quiet time if they have ADHD, or that kind of thing. And I'm seeing that even right now at Mark Delay, it's not an overly full school, but I know that when a special needs kid needs to be pulled, they're sat in the library, where there might be other children, there might be all these distractions, and they're might not already be getting what they need. And I understand that building on to Mark Delay is, is an, a possibility, thank you. An option, but then, I, my concern there is that we're building ourselves into a corner then, because then we build that, and what if the numbers get higher than what happens? And I, I'm not speaking as a professional, I'm just speaking as from what I've seen happen in Brookfield. Another note that I have from being the parent of three special ed children, it is my nightmare for the team at LACE to be broken up. I very much respect the team at Mark Delay, and I respect, I'm sure I will respect the team at Eisenhower, but we are, me, my husband and I are a federal family, sorry, he's not here, I don't know why, I thought he was back there. We have moved a lot. We have moved to different states, we have moved to different school districts, and we've now been here for two years. And my oldest, who is a fourth grader right now at LACE, has always had trouble, and LACE has been a miracle worker for her, and it's not just her special ed teacher, it, it's gotten to the point now where she's mainstreamed. She's perfectly fine, nobody would ever know that there's something going on, and I cannot put into words how amazing the entire team at LACE is. And I was a teacher before I had my children, I was an educator, and you can't buy that, you can't buy that, how they work together, and it's the principal and all the way down. The fact that the principal, the second, third day of school, knew my daughter's name, like, that matters. And, and I know, again, I'm coming from it from the more, this is what I see. I'm there a lot, I see this on a daily basis, and just the chemistry of that team, breaking that up would be a travesty, which is, I know, not something that you guys would necessarily need to consider, but as a parent to a kid who needs a lot of attention, that's, that's the dream, and it matters. Sorry.
The, the school district would have to make a decision how they want to divide up the school district. I don't know if you, you weren't in Darien years ago, when the, what is now the community center, the Park District building on Fairview? That was another District 61 facility. They actually had K1 and 2, I think, in that building. And they sold that building to the Park District, Park District redeveloped it into the building you have there now. So they've already gone from three buildings, excuse me, four buildings to three buildings, and I include Eisenhower Junior High is the third building. So they, they've made those accommodations before, and by doing that, they actually save themselves money. And school districts, they actually go to fewer buildings, will save. Now, I'm, I'm a retired educator as well, and I dealt with special education students, and I can tell you that, as a, as a school district, when you do a needs assessment, you're not just looking at space, but you're also looking at programs. And I, I would have to trust that the good people who run that school district would make those decisions to keep those teams intact. They could very well just make 3, 4, and 5 part of Mark Delay, and just bring that entire team over there. It, it would force them to take a look at the way they provide curriculum to those kids, provide instruction to those kids. It may benefit the children even more so to have a change like that. I don't know. You know, I'm not the one who's going to be making that decision, I'm sure they'll weigh all that information. But I, you know, I would caution you, again, as Mr. Vanna said, everything right now is very preliminary. This could all end in the next month or so. It may not happen. And, you know, I would like to see it happen, I'd like to see an opportunity afforded the city and the residents to have a mall and a shopping area and condos, and, but it may not happen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I appreciate what you say, I appreciate your feelings, you're coming, speaking from the heart, I could tell. It means a lot to you, and, you know, our children meant a lot, mean a lot to us, too. We're all parents here, and so, I understand very much what you're saying, and believe me, your thoughts and your concerns would be addressed.
Okay. And again, I understand, it's not, just part of the, I see it happening in Brookfield, and that terrifies me, because I'm planning on being a resident here until...
One of the things I really liked is what you said, there's a lot of young people thinking of moving to Darien. I like that.
Yeah.
So we encourage them to move to Darien. We like that idea.
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to move on to receiving, to the approval of the minutes for January 20th, 2020. I have a motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments or changes that are required of the man? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the Alderman have communications for the council? Alderman Clistak?
Thanks, Mayor. Two pieces of communication. First one, last time we had the cannabis vote, I missed a few people who reached out to me, so I'll make sure their names aren't missed. First one is Karen Purviski, second one is Nate and Erica Maury, third Becky Wilcox and Lisa Grau. and Lisa Grau in their opposition to cannabis. Also, I received some communication verbally from a few residents and also from some businesses with regards to the quality of water, I don't know if any residents have noticed, but it has more of a chlorine taste, more of a chemical smell. And I reached out to Dan and Municipal Services and they got back with me really quickly. And what we learned is this past year, Illinois legislation passed more stringent requirements on EPA, so they're putting more chlorine in the water, so you'll notice a bit more chlorine taste in the water. And the reason for that is the cases of Legionnaires' disease, Bolingbrook had an outbreak and a few other municipalities as well. So, one of the ways to address this is to put 1mg, I believe, of chlorine versus 0.5. In your lines, you have a lot of dead lines that come to an end and that water sometimes doesn't circulate and that's where bacteria can grow, so by putting in more chlorine, you can sort of dissipate or take, or address the bacteria that can potentially grow. So, I know a few restaurants reached out, said their customers were concerned about that, so I might feedback that they just might need a water filter to address that, so, because I know a few residents do have their personal water filter to get the chlorine taste out of their water, so.
Just as a side note to that, it puts out parts per million, so, parts per million is basically what's referred to as an optimal level throughout town at a 1.0, parts per level on total chlorine. In respect to chlorine tastes, if residents like, would like to drink the tap water, what they should do is take a pitcher, a glass pitcher, put the water in there, put the water in there, leave it overnight in the fridge, typically the chlorine will dissipate by morning, so you won't have that chlorine taste as well. Again, just another way to get rid of chlorine smell.
Thank you. Anyone else have communication? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a few here tonight. Marie Ciagla from the 1600 block of Claire Court's been in communication with myself and Mr. Gomack's department regarding her neighbors and some stormwater issues on their properties. We had a communication from Stan Nemec, 7100 block of Hudson, had some questions regarding the upcoming public work, or the public hearing regarding our signage, you know, that's going to be, you know, in the works. And then, on Saturday morning, I was downtown very, very early and I was just going through the Twitter feed and we'd seen that there had been, you know, a ruse burglary and, you know, a resident made a tweet back to the police department saying it seems like there's, you know, a higher rise of, you know, crime lately and, and the guy had his email, or his website on there, I was able to find the email and sent him an email along with, and I copied, you know, Alderman, or Chief Thomas and found out he was in Alderman Shower's ward. I'm in, I'm going to blow this, Abdamonium, 1300 block of Regency and Chief Thomas was able to get back to him tonight, you know, with his concerns and try to, you know, figure those things out. That's all I got tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I did receive a communication from Blaine Lowfretty of Creekside Lane in Brookridge Creek subdivision, basically just wanted to share with her us some thoughts on the proposed electronic sign at the corner of Cass Avenue in Plainfield. And she brought up some good points about, you know, if we were to proceed with a downtown area at 75th and Cass, that that might be a preferred location. She's not fully supportive of an electronic sign in the area until we've decided if we are going to have and grow a general, a central location. And she feels that, you know, electronic signs can be eyesores and that there's, you know, now that we have adopted a new communications protocol and plan, that, you know, residents might be able to get their information better that way, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it takes us to the mayor's report and the first item under the mayor's report is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to endorse the Legislative Action Program of the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference for the 2020 Legislative Session. Whereas the City of Darien is a member of DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference and whereas the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference develops its annual Legislative Action Program with the goal of establishing a comprehensive platform on legislative issues in order to protect and benefit the interests of its member municipalities, residents, and businesses in those, these municipalities and the region generally. And whereas on December 5th, 2019, the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference Board of Directors voted unanimously to adopt its 2020 Legislative Action Program attached hereto. And whereas the City of Darien will individually benefit by formally establishing positions on legislative issues affecting municipalities, thereby giving clear direction to officials and employees of the City of Darien regarding legislative positions that may be represented in official capacity on behalf of the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Darien hereby adopts the DuPage Mayor's and Managers 2020 Legislative Action Program, which is attached and includes the following listed legislative priorities. Restoring local government distributed fund revenue. This is the amount of money that the state of Illinois collects from taxes that actually gets returned to municipalities. And at one time it was 10%, it has been as low as 6%, it's currently at 8%. And the DuPage Mayor's and Managers is working with people down in Springfield, hopefully to get it back up to 10%. Preserving local authority and revenue. Investing in Illinois infrastructure. Protecting public safety, retirement, and taxpayers. And reforming workers' compensation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference, to all state and federal legislators representing the City of Darien, to the Office of the Government, Governor, and to department heads in the City of Darien. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any discussion? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Six ayes, one absent. Takes us to the next item, which is Census 2020. Every council meeting, I try to update you on where we are with the census. We're continuing to do the same things, this report's going to sound very much like it did a couple of weeks ago. We're still, still running public service announcements on Direct Connect. We're running, we're also putting census information out on Direct Connect. Our Complete Count Committee will be formalized at the Economic Development Committee meeting this Wednesday night and we still need individuals from the community who want to participate on our Complete Count Committee. So, I would advise people to, if you are interested in, in working on this committee, please let me know. If you're interested in working as a census worker, the United States Census Bureau is paying $29.50 an hour for census workers to work. It kind of brings us up to date on that. I will mention a couple of things that are not on this agenda and that is, I've been informed that District 99, which is Downers Grove South, Downers Grove North, student artists recently won 94 awards, including 30 gold keys, 32 silver keys, and 32 honorable mentions at the Chicagoland Area Regional Scholastic Art Show. And the District 69, 99 will be host to the Scholastic Art Show Regional Exhibition from February 2nd to February 7th at the Downers Grove North Campus. And then in addition to that, I would also like to note, for the council and for the public, the City Council will be conducting its budget development hearings starting February 19th. Those are open meetings, folks, people want to know how we develop the budget, what money's being spent, what is being spent on, you are more than invited to attend those meetings. You can sit there in the audience just like you are, you could ask a question. That starts February 19th. The budget packet will go out to the Aldermen and we'll start the budget discussions that night and we'll have probably two to three sessions to complete that, but I want the public to know, they are invited to that. Anyone who says that they don't understand why we spend the money the way we do, well, this is your opportunity to understand why we spend the money the way we do. And the other thing I want to mention is that on March 26th at Chuck Southern Comforts, we're going to have our State of the City address, so anyone who would like to hear what we see as the current state of the City of Darien, please attend that luncheon, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring that and they'll be putting information out that the public will be able to get on the Direct Connect. And that's my report under the mayor's report. Takes us to the city's clerks' report, so Brian?
No report for the clerk and for the administrator.
Thank you, Brian. Department had information and questions, anybody have any questions for either Chief Thomas or for Mr. Gomack? Anything you gentlemen like to bring us up to date on at all or?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Chief, I'm sorry, one item, maybe you could just give a quick overview, I know you prepared a draft letter and we had talked about sending that out, maybe you could just give a short overview and let the council know, because we have talked about where we should send that. I know we would, in addition to mail, we would put it out on Direct Connect, different things, but we did talk also about mailing it to areas, but maybe you can give an overview for everybody?
Sure. Last meeting, we talked about the residential burglaries and burglary of motor vehicle and overall crime. And then there's conversation about tweeting that information out and social media, but how many households don't use either one of those or Direct Connect? So, the thought was to have a direct mailing from the chief's office to about a third of the city, it would be north of 75th, east of Cass, and probably some of the more surrounding west and south areas, which were the, more of the primary target of the residential burglaries.
Any questions for the chief?
Aye. Is there a possibility, chief, that it would go out to all the citizens of Darien, all the residents?
It's just the cost, so, there's about 9,000 residences and so, doing a third is about 1,500 bucks to do all the city, it's almost five grand, so, totally up to the council there who want to spend some money.
Any questions?
No.
All right, we'll move to our treasurer's report, Michael?
Thank you Mayor, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 192020 in the amount of $138,749.10 from listed funds, payroll for the period ended January 16th in the amount of $275,447.33, for a total be approved of $414,196.43.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Questions? None, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one absent.
The treasurer's report is approved. Mike, the monthly report?
The monthly report reflecting the eight months ended December 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $11,570,174, expenses of $8,559,940, current balance $3,824,483. Water fund year-to-date revenue $5,116,792, expenses of $4,301,826, current balance of Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $499,118, expenses of $256,676, current balance of $590,783. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $13,386, expenses of $368,180, current balance of $2,206,767. And the capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $277,102, expenses of $4,671,245, for a current balance of $4,643,112.
Any questions for the treasurer on the monthly report? If none, that takes us to standing committee reports, any of the Aldermen have reports? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you Mayor, Municipal Services Committee met on January 27 and approved the December 2019 minutes and our next Municipal Services meeting is currently scheduled for February the 24th in council chambers at 7pm.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we are having a, scheduled to have a police committee meeting on Tuesday, normally we'd have it on, on a Monday, but because the residents say our city council meetings are moved to Tuesday the 18th, 6 o'clock across the parking lot and the police committee, or the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
Yes. The Admin Finance Committee met earlier this evening prior to council meeting and as Mayor Marquez already mentioned, we will be having our Committee of a Whole, which is our budgeting workshop, and the first of a series of meetings starts on February 19th. It will be open to the public, it's here in council chambers, so anyone is welcome to attend, it will also be televised and the materials, the budget will all be available online for the citizens to look at.
Thank you. Michael?
The Police Pension Fund will be having their quarterly meeting this Thursday, February the 6th at 7 o'clock across the street in the police training room, go over the portfolio performance from the two investment managers for the quarter ended December 31st, as well as an item on there probably to consider consolidation of the investment managers from two into one.
Thank you, Mike. That takes us to questions and comments, agenda related, does anyone have any comments regarding any of the items on the agenda? If none, we move to old business, there being none, we move to the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion granting a waiver of the $50 a day fee for the Class J temporary liquor license for Our Lady of Peace. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting public improvements subject to maintenance for the Society of Mount Carmel of the Little Flower, the National Shrine to St. Teresa's at 1313 North Frontage Road. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Underground Pipe and Veil Company for Mueller brand brass fittings at the proposed unit prices for the maintenance of the water system for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract extension with Rags Electric Company Incorporated for the 2021 Street Light Maintenance Contract beginning May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Norwood Tank Company for storms, sewer, concrete structures, iron sewer grates, and concrete adjusting rings at the proposed unit prices for various public works projects for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting the unit price proposal for analytical soil testing fees from Testing Services Corporation at the proposed unit prices for certain waste for a period of May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting the public improvements and releasing the letter of credit in the amount of $157,102.86 for the Rolling Hill Subdivision, which is 2100 Manning Road. Item H, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of two Solar Speed Alert 18 speed limit signs from Traffic Logics Corporation in an amount not to exceed $5,598. And item I, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the payment of the fiscal year 2019 Police Reporting Management System for equipment replacement contribution, operating expenses, and cut over costs to DuPage County ETSB in the amount of $24,153.41. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Six ayes, six ayes.
The consent agenda is approved, takes us to new business, there being none, takes us to questions and comments and announcements, do any of the Aldermen have any announcements? Alderwoman Sullivan?
As mentioned at the last meeting, the announcement was made of our 2020 Citizen of the Year, Alita Pecknick, and we'll be honoring her with the Citizen of the Year Banquet on Saturday, March 7th, 2020 at Alpine Banquets from 6pm on with a dinner. Tickets can be purchased at the City of Darien for $35 per person, it is a lovely evening with great food. It is a lovely evening with great food and great citizenship honoring this wonderful woman, and I encourage everyone to attend. I'll be there.
Anyone else? Alderman Kenny?
Just, you know, kind of referring back to the mailer that chief's putting out, just questions pop in my head. Chief, what's the cost of the current mailer you're going to be, you know, putting out here soon? And when will that mailer go out?
I'll probably finish that this week and start putting it, stuffing it and sending it out.
What's the, what's the cost?
Oh, it's 1,500 bucks if we do the 3,000 households.
You know, because I had a ruse burglary in my ward, not to, you know, and that's west of Cass, that's, that's west of Cass Avenue. I'm sure there's been other burglaries around town as well. You know, I'm a, I'm a guy that pretty much tries to, you know, not spend money where it doesn't need to be spent. Right, Mr. Gomick?
That is absolutely correct.
But I think in lieu of what's been going on, I think this might be the time to go to the council. And that's, I think it's a needed cost to, you know, mail the whole entire city, not just, not just a select few households. That's just my, just my, my two cents right now.
I to, oh, I'm sorry.
What, what's the nature of the information that's going to be in that letter?
It's in a narrative format of what I talked about a couple of weeks ago about the forced entry burglaries. There's a comment about how to protect yourself. There's a comment about the ruse burglary, how you protect yourself. There's dispelling myths about the crime going up in Darien when it's actually going down. There's information about the motor veh, or burglary of motor vehicle, like the, this is the lowest year we've had. You go back 10 years, we had 111. So it's been reduced significantly, but because of the tweets and different information that we put out, I think there's a thought within the community that the crime is going up where it is not. So it, it has a multifaceted approach, but it also, like I said, there's a warning to it, there's a reality to it and a request to protect yourself.
This was obviously discussed too with the communications group. And I feel like everyone sitting around here, all of our wards have been impacted by burglaries, maybe not in the last couple of weeks, but definitely over the last 12 months, whether it's, you know, cars. And I know one of the point you brought up and it's been, you know, covered in the patch and in other online news sources about, you know, if you lock your car, that's likely going to diminish the, you know, your, your car getting broken into. But something else that was recommended with your letter was a call out to residents getting the letter. Hopefully, they will open the letter, but also urging them to follow the police department on Twitter, urging them to subscribe to Direct Connect, which is going to be updated and improved and streamlined in the next 60 days and make it user-friendly on a mobile device. You know, utilizing the, the city website, which is going to get a facelift. So there's all these other, you know, opportunities for people to get in communications with the city. And that was something that was going to be added to the, like, end of your communication. So I am very much adamant that this goes to all residents of Darien, not just people who have been most recently impacted by crime.
Because lately, because lately, we've been getting berated that we're not giving out information enough. So here's, here's an opportunity for us to go ahead and take that step. And for additional $3,500, I think it's something we need to do.
I would, you know, you're going to have that increase anytime that we're adding Twitter to every robbery, every residential burglary and every burglary of motor vehicle. So it looks like it's going up. And to try to communicate to the population to continually send out a new letter every time that there is a increase in crime and some crime type is going to really cost a lot of money and a lot of time to put that together, a lot of time to stuff them, address them and mail them. So it's just a cautionary tale.
You know, there's another, there's another dynamic at work here. And that is, those are those people that you can show them the statistics and say, crime is actually going down. And they'll look at it and they'll say, I don't believe you because I heard this and I heard that. In fact, even researched, it's called deniability. People will deny something that doesn't fit their perception of what they think reality is. And so I think the letter is a good idea. I think sending it out to everybody, because I read the letter, I think you did a great job. I think that it's been reworked a little bit and I think it looks very good, but I think it should go out as well. The other thing I would like, it also invites people to go to Direct Connect. It invites people to call the police. Today, I looked at something on Nextdoor where an individual said, an individual was at their front door. They saw this person, he didn't look like it was right for him to be there. And instead of calling Darien Police about a suspicious person, they went on Nextdoor and they put down, there's somebody walking around our neighborhood, you know. We want, you know, you made a comment, cops like catching the bad guys.
It's a fun part of the job.
And I, I think that people need to understand that rather than go to Direct Connect, Nextdoor and say, oh, there's someone outside my house, everybody in my neighborhood, please be alert, call the Darien Police and have them come out and look at your neighborhood. And, you know, and I would hope that your letter does spur some of that. But I would agree with Mary and I would agree with, with.
Mine's, my name's the same as yours, okay?
That's a good one.
I think, I, I have no problem with sending it out to everybody. Tom?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess the one thing I'd also bring up too, two weeks from now, we'd be sitting here listening from residents saying, I didn't get one, I didn't get one, why did my neighbor across the street got one? I didn't get one. Right? So I think sending it to, to everyone in town makes sense. And I think based on the survey feedback too, that a lot of people say they didn't get anything, any information. So if it goes to everybody, you sort of wash away that complaint that I didn't get it and, oh, did you get the mail?
There you go.
Yeah, so.
Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it either going to everyone. I would like to get the most bang for our buck, though. Is it possible that our new company that we've hired couldn't put together a sheet saying, this is, this is the changes we're making? Instead of having the police chief tell them, look at this, have something a little more, something that's marketed to show the changes that we're making in communicating to the residents and just slide one more sheet of paper inside that same envelope?
Bye. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, we had, we haven't gotten to the budget yet, but the first step with Metro Strategies is also we're looking at a newsletter for May 1st. So one of the options is to roll something like that out as part of this newsletter that would also get sent to everybody. And we also talked about doing the chief's letter with that first, first issue, but again, there was concern of a little time lag between there. But I think to get that information out, we can certainly, whatever the council wants, but it would make sense to do it in that edition of the, of the newsletter that will go out.
Even if we sent out something that's like, welcome, at beginning of May 1st, we're going to be changing, or whatever date they're actually jumping in on this. And just to have a one sheet instead of a newsletter saying, you know, we're going to be doing this, this and this in the future, look for more information in these spots. And I don't know, I'm just thinking, we're sending, we're spending the money, the postage is the same unless we go, it gets too heavy. And I'm, if we can give them a little more information, why not?
The only thing I just think of is because this issue is so sensitive, I wouldn't want that to get buried in something that people perceive is good.
That's a good point.
Is junk mail. And chief, would that be coming from the city of Darien? Would that be coming from the, the police department?
It's the police department letterhead and police department envelope.
I would, I would, I'd rather go that route.
And I even recommended having it stamped on the outside of the envelope, important communications from your police chief, so that it really calls attention to people that it's not just, you know.
Garbage mail.
Chief sending junk.
Yeah. But Tom, we've given some thought to, when we were, had the Metro Strategies people in, that when they come up with the new design for the Direct Connect, that we actually have like a poster made which shows what the new cover is going to look like. We come up with the new newsletter, we do the same thing because a lot of people, when they don't get the Neighbor's Magazine, they're going to wonder why they're not getting Neighbor's Magazine. And the new newsletter is going to be more along the lines of what the Indian Prairie Library newsletter looks like. And some people, between the mailbox and the front door, it goes in the garbage, you know, and we want them, whereas Neighbor's Magazine, they see it as, it's a booklet. So we want them to understand this is the new format. So we are looking at informing them of that.
Okay.
You're quiet tonight, Ted. Any observations?
I'm just very relaxed.
Anything else for the chief or Dan or me or Brian or, how about anybody in the audience? Anything for the good of the, yes?
I actually just had a couple of questions about that newsletter. And you were talking about funding. I was just wondering, is it something that's going to go out very often or just in certain occurrences? Or is it a regular, it going to be regular?
The news, the newsletter, the new newsletter is going to take the place of the Neighbor's Magazine and it's going to go out quarterly.
And that includes what?
Everybody in the city gets the newsletter.
Oh, what I meant was, he was talking about?
The letter from myself is just going to be a one-time thing.
That was the question. But you're saying that there might be other occurrences where you would want to do it?
I can't predict the future. I would very much hope that there's not another occasion to have a rash of burglaries or anything else, but if that does occur, depends on the timing of the newsletter that we can maybe piggyback in the newsletter. If not, then maybe a separate mailing.
Well, my only thought was because you were saying that you were concerned about the cost of doing it each time, that if you're sending it to everybody, it's three times the cost. Then maybe this first time, you add into the, one of the Direct Connect or one of those, an opt-out. Certain households will say, no, we'd rather get the email. Then you might save a lot of money if you do need to do them in the future to, like, you know, these households would, are more likely to read an email than read something paper. And I'm just stating that as somebody who, like, I know that I'm going to check my email every day and my mail might stay there. Or again, if it's, says, if it's clearly a public. A lot of paper gets recycled because too much paper comes into the house, is my only point. And so I, I feel like a lot of that's easier to ignore than in emails, especially if, and again, they would have to choose to opt-out. So it could be, it would, it would be some, the people who would choose to do it probably be people like me who would much rather read an email than get something paper. And I'm just thinking of it as a possible way to save money, especially if it's something you might do in the future.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that the city has everybody's, the city's, every resident's email or anything like that.
No, but that actually serves my point.
Yeah, and that's a very good question because we're talking about the quarterly newsletter because we're preparing the draft budget for discussion. We have that in there. But, you know, as we're looking at all options, there's an option not to send out any paper newsletter because really, at the end of the day, we're trying to get everybody on the Direct Connect.
Right.
And Twitter and, and get them back to our Facebook. So we, we have struggled, like many municipalities, that have gone away from the paper mailings. Some have come back. But I think at this point, we are trying to capture those, you know, all the residents that might not, exactly what you're saying, might not want electronically. And then some of the mailing we'll do of that might be at a bulk rate and it's not necessarily to a specific resident. The, the chief's letter may be addressed directly, but the newsletter, a lot of times are just bulk, a bulk mailing. And, and that, you know, to, to not do a bulk mailing for specific addresses would end up probably costing more in postage. But if there's, if there is a way to do that, that would be the best way for people that don't want it. But I don't know, I don't know of a way yet, but what we're going to, eventually we'll be working with printers and they should be able to help us with, in terms of costs and mailing, what is the most cost-effective means?
Right. And I, again, I just wanted to bring up the idea of, of the opt-out because I, I know, and for a lot of websites, that's the quickest way for them to, you know, just like our credit cards are going to, oh, do you want to stop the paper? You know, if there was a way to do that then. And I, and then I understand, and I 100% agree with the, or like, sorry. It's, I understand where you guys are coming from and I 100% agree that it needs to go to everybody and everybody needs to get this information. I was just trying to figure out a way, you know, stating that, I know that this is the way a lot of other people have done it. And again, I don't know how you're printing it, but it was just, thought I'd bring up the idea.
Well, if we had everybody on Direct Connect, we certainly would not be talking about a paper, you know, anymore. So that, you know, you, and you bring up another good point. One of the things we always ask residents is, tell your neighbors, tell your friends, and if you have, to sign up for Direct Connect. But also if there's our senior citizens in your neighborhood or, or your direct neighbors that you know, very easy to get them a copy of, of the Direct Connect that we send on Fridays. And, you know, not all the information is critical every Friday, but there is a lot of information there. And that is the best way that we have to get out when brush pickup is, when meetings are and a lot of different things. So again, we always ask residents to, to help get the word out.
Right. And I think that was my, I know somebody else made the point of, you don't have all the residents' emails. And that's, that, that like, almost informs my point, that the people, you do have their emails, that might be a huge number. And if a huge number opt-out, that might change the optics of how you do it, is, is all I meant. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I suppose we're three minutes away from everybody getting to go home. So a couple of things. A cheap way to get a message out, maybe it delivers to schools, like the note totes, you print off a thousand things and you have the, the school stuff them in the kids' backpacks. We have to be careful about the optics of any mass mailing addressing crime. Ms. Holtzman had mentioned, you know, we're trying to increase property values, attract young families, and it may be inconsistent with that messaging if, I would just suggest that it be more like how to prevent crime, not say, oh man, you know, we got a, we got a wave here in Darien. That may be adverse to property values and people wanting to come here. We've talked a lot about surveys and, so I'm not going to reiterate those. I think everybody knows me and Jerry Legansky and several others weren't a big fan of the last one. And I mentioned over 21, do you live in Darien, yada? But I'd be interested if we could survey the 37 men and women in blue that worked for Police Chief Thomas and what their feelings are. They're experts in crime, law enforcement, drug interdiction. I would love to see what, if you gave them some type of survey, what their opinion was on putting a pot shop in the middle of Darien. I think that would be helpful to everybody within this body. You know, everybody here's been in the community a fairly long time and your public service is to be admired. And I believe we're stronger together. And I think that this pot shop thing is something we need to collectively resolve. And a lot of us are committed to doing that. With the sign, you know, put an electric sign on the busy of a corner, I hope it's not for motorists to read because I'd rather them be watching the road than like trying to read some electronic sign as it flashes by. I would just give a thoughtful consideration to that. And then with the school issue, I think that's interesting. So you have to think if we redeploy those physical assets to Mark to Lay, they're going to need money to buy a bus. I mean, I live in one of the wealthiest school districts in Illinois and we can't afford a bus. So you're going to take 400 people and take them from Lace to Mark to Lay, somebody's going to have to pay for that. It's going to either be, the burden's going to fall on the parents or the school district and it's not immaterial. Also, there's an increase in carbon footprint as you seek to have students have longer commute. And then lastly, to wrap things up, Mayor Marquez mentioned about increasing the level of services or maintaining services and we have to increase the tax base or increase property taxes. I would submit a fourth thing, and being an expert in operational efficiency, I would note that there are oftentimes efficiencies that could be gathered. And I wouldn't pick one over the other. I personally have experienced things like, you know, benefit reductions that killed my healthcare, froze my salary. And I wouldn't wish that on any employee here, but I would submit that we should continue to look for efficiencies before we look for what does that bag of providing for essential services, you know, going to be composed? And certainly that would require a reduction in expenses in some areas and perhaps an increase in revenues. Thank you all for your service to the community and the time you've given us tonight.
Thank you. Kelly, if I could just add one thing to what you said, if you come to the budget meetings, you'll see how we looked at that budget and every, every detail. And the things that we did cut out, I mean, we are very conservative in terms of the way we budget. And so we look at our, our budget as a document that best represents what we feel, how we can best. budget as a document that best represents what we feel, how we can best use, how effective we could use the money taxpayers pay. Taxpayers, I don't think mind paying taxes if they know the money is being used efficiently and effectively for their services. Everybody, you look out in front of your house, sometimes you wanna see a cop car to know your neighborhood's safe. On a snowy Sunday, you wanna look out, you wanna see one of Dan Gombek's trucks out there plowing. You wanna see your garbage picked up, you wanna see your brush picked up, you wanna see the free leaf program, et cetera, et cetera. We consider all of that, and all I'm saying is that if you project out like we do, and you look at revenues, sales tax revenues make up a considerable portion of our budget, and we want that to grow. And when you're built out as a city like we are, you need to look at opportunities, not only to fill the vacancies at Chestnut Court, but to keep the businesses that currently are here, here, and to bring new businesses in. So I'm not saying, I don't want a negative perception to be there on how I view the school. School's critical, and I realize that. I'm a retired educator, so it's important to me, but at the same time, I have a responsibility to make sure your brush is picked up, your streets are plowed, your public safety is there, and, believe me, I, one of the best trainings to be an Alderman is to be mayor, because over the last month, as I've worked with Mr. Vanna on developing that budget, I've seen things that in 22 years as an Alderman, I didn't see as clearly, and I have to tell you, we're very, very responsible in terms of how we do that, and if you wanna know how we do it, come to those budget meetings and listen.
Thank you for that, and thank you, Alderman Shower, for your efforts with the money and the budget.
Just, go ahead, Tom.
Just a quick comment on efficiency. I know when I came on board, one of the things I looked at, as well as operations and efficiency, last year, a year before, there were... We actually trained them to do multiple jobs as well, so that's one of the things we've done to minimize costs and not have as much overhead, so, definitely, all of us keep an eye on that.
I wanna be number one.
Anything else from the audience? Mitchell? We haven't seen you for a while. Where you been hiding?
The events always interrupt me. I just wanted to say that the city council and the police and municipal services have done great by communicating, and that, that you all are improving your communication, which is great, and so that the police, that you should always call 911, because when there's an emergency, you should always say something. Don't be quiet about it. I know there's probably some, a couple people that are quiet, but always say something, which is a good thing, and I admire that you all that communicate and all that work together to be a good city, an amazing city, and I just wanted to admire all of you guys for working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitchell.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alderman Penny, seconded by Alderman Belzak, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 8:43.